We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. President shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's records, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the rule.
Welcome, President Beck, you, Amrick, Fritz, Miller, Schmidt, Hans, Marshall.
The first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of August 15, 2017.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign none to register your votes. Please display the votes.
If you're ever welcome back, have a Fritz, Miller, Schmidt, Hans, Marshall.
The next item is consideration of approval of draft minutes of August 22, 2017. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign none to register your votes. Please display the votes.
If you're ever welcome back, have a Fritz, Miller, Schmidt, Hans, Marshall.
Next, we have the consent agenda under items three, four, and five. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign none to register your votes. Please display the votes. Next, item number six is a public hearing, presentation and discussion of functioning and progress of the Seward Economic Development Plan and the Citizen Advisory Review Committee. Do you have someone here?
I'll handle that one. So, the CARC met on August 17, 2017 to report on activities for the Seward LBA-40 Economic Development Fund as of July 31, 2017. Cash balance in the fund as of that date was $273,141.76. The monthly $12,500 contributions from the city's sales tax to economic development have continued on. All loan recipients continue to make principal and interest payments in a timely manner. There was a $9,000 grant funds previously approved that went towards downtown revitalization planning grant with DED. Another project that was approved in the first half of 2017 was a grant submitted through SCCDP for $41,870 for the Phase One of the Seward Rail Campus on February 1, 2017, to go to Olson Associates for the creation of the layout and traffic study and an additional for $35,470, and also to the loan company for site budget and market analysis for $6,400. And those funds have been distributed to the vendors. A grant of $40,000 and a loan of $195,000 over a period of 15 years at 1.875% annual interest rate, which is half of the prime rate at the time, was approved on February 1 for Greg Austin doing business as Fullfield Ag LLC for development of business. His business there is a large business building and hiring of additional employees, which provides technology and consulting to farmers. Both the grant and loan were distributed on February 15, 2017. A loan for $100,000 was made, 15 years, 1.875%, again, half of the prime rate, approved on March 1 for Polytech LLC, Hexagon Properties out of Friend, Nebraska. They're moving their business operations to within Seward city limits. And they're going to develop and do an expansion of their business of making flotation tracks for center pivot irrigation systems using plastic molding process. The loan was distributed on March 30, 2017. And the last item considered by the LBA-40 group that was approved and reviewed by the CARC was a parity agreement with Nebraska Enterprise Fund regarding the status of a loan repayment for Polytech LLC, the one I just described, whereby security of each of the parties in the real estate, being the city of Seward and the Nebraska Enterprise Fund, would be the same proportion of their approved investment of each of the said building improvement sites. So essentially what that was is when they came in, they asked us, we had a second position on the loan that was going on for the expansion of that business. Nebraska Enterprise Fund, who is also going to loan money out, asked to be put into a second position for us to move to a third position. And we didn't agree to that. And so we agreed to go with a 40-60 split. Our loan is a 15-year loan. Their loan is a five-year loan. And so if we were, for some reason, to foreclose on that loan because of default, then we would break that down 60-40 to what was owed. And so that was approved by the LBA-40 committee. And then CARC reviewed miscellaneous payments and approved those, and no other questions were asked.
Any questions or comments from the council? This is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from the public would wish to comment on item number six, this would be your opportunity to do so. If no one's wishing to comment at this time, then I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And then move back to the council. Do you have any questions or comments? Otherwise, we would need a motion to accept the report.
Motion to accept the report?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign none to register your votes. Please display the votes. Our next item number seven is also a public hearing. This is for the liquor license application of the Maverick Group LLC doing business as Par 15 Lounge. Did you want to add anything to that?
We didn't have anything back in the application negative. We have a report from Police Chief Lindstrom, and he has nothing to report as well.
Any questions from the council? This is also a public hearing, so we do the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on item number seven? Seeing no one wishing to comment, then I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any questions or comments on this item? Otherwise, we would need a motion to approve.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. You're all right. Let me back up a second. We got 7A and 7B. I didn't read far enough down. Okay, so we have, unless there's any other questions or comments on seven, we'll vote 7A. That's the consideration of a resolution approving a Class CK, which is K is on off sale for wine, beer, and spirits, and then the K is the catering license. K stands for catering. It's a joke. That's liquor license. So, yes, you introduce the resolution, John. All right. The resolution has been introduced, and it designated as Resolution Number 2017-11. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Okay, so that was 7A. And 7B is consideration of application of Matthew A. Howe as manager of Class CK liquor license for Maverick Group LLC doing business as Par 15 Lounge. I believe that's just the motion. Anyone like to make that motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign none to register your votes. Please display the votes. All right, thank you. Next, item number eight is also a public hearing. This is notice of 2017-2018 budget hearing and budget summary on adopting a different property tax levy from prior year. Greg, would you like to take that?
Yep, this is just the beginning of our budget approval process. As you're well aware, we had our budget workshop just over two weeks ago now. And we presented the budget to you along with Terry Galloway, going through kind of a status of the budget and our cash reserves. And we made that presentation to you. So we'll have a number of items in order here to take care of approval of that budget. After our discussions, we went back and reviewed a few items. And in discussion with the mayor, the budget that's here tonight is the exact budget as presented previously at the workshop. We saw no specific need for changes or anything else in there at this point. So that's what we'll start with as proposed this evening. And so what we're doing is we will make a motion here to approve. Let's see, what was the increase in the amount that we're requesting? We are leaving the levy exactly the same as prior years, both on the city side and the airport authority side. And our total levy ask is the same as prior years as well. But with the increase in assessments, the total amount you're requesting in is different from last year.
Any questions or comments? We have a number of items. This is also a public hearing. So if you'd like, we can maybe just see the public has any comments first and then come back to the council in case you have any questions. Yes, did you?
Could you just give everybody the update on, we had discussed the utility increases?
We were asked to take a look at, by Councilman Beck, to take a look at the increases that were included in there. I believe it was a 3% increase, is that correct, Bonnie, water? And a 5.8% increase in wastewater, as were recommended by the NMPP survey study that was done two years ago. First, I'd let you know, pass this information along. You technically approved over a year ago the 5.8%. That was included in a rate increase where you increased the sewer rate a year ago. And so both of those increases were approved previously. That doesn't mean you can't change it. Utility rates can be changed at any point in time due to circumstance as they're a business fund. But that, if we don't do anything differently, that's what will happen. It's already been approved.
And that was, and that was the number that was published?
Yes.
Right, so if you want, because the assumption was the council came back later and wanted to lower them, then just to kind of, for fairness to the public, we published a higher number than what you may come back and lower it to if you decide to do that. So rather than going the other direction where we assume it's going to be cut and it's not that far, we don't want to mislead anyone as to what the council's intentions were. So that's why we published it the way we did. So you may have seen in the paper and thought, wait a second. But that's what, that's what that means.
Concerning that topic though, last, during our work session, Councilman Beck also noted she would like to get some information back in regards to if we looked at cutting those rate increases by approximately half. And we got those numbers put together. And I believe it was approximately $30,000 would have been all the savings that we would have made on the water side by cutting it half, and approximately $50,000 on the sewer side. Approximations here, I don't have the numbers exactly in front of me. But with the recent issues that we've had with our water system and some of the other things going on, we didn't note that that would be at this time for the proposal tonight bringing forward. You guys obviously can make adjustments or amendments if that's what the body determines. But we didn't want to make any, any changes to that going forward. We think we'll be able to use those funds diligently to help out with things that we've identified, so.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Ed.
I wasn't here for the work session. I should have been. I was in town. I just completely forgot about it. But just a question, Greg. I've asked a couple other councilmen to kind of fill me in on what I missed. And I could be mistaken in my perception, but I thought in my discussions, it was mentioned that this budget is actually, has a $200,000 deficit.
That is, that is correct.
And if so, how does that, I couldn't find it in the paperwork.
It's approximately, when Terry presented it to us two weeks ago, the deficit is approximately $232,000. And we are taking that from cash reserves. Terry presented his benchmarks for our cash reserves, and he felt that the general fund itself is in a good position in regards to its cash reserves. And so to place ourselves in a position where we could handle all of the things that we anticipated, there are a number of capital items and projects that we had to include in there again this year that were also in last year's that unfortunately may not even be completed this year. And that would include Carroll K Boulevard extension, the trail, and also Weaverley Road amongst a number of other smaller items. And what happened was, once they were put in the CIPs and they were entered into the budget documents or submitted to the state auditor, we're in a position now where we can't remove them until they're completed. And I can tell you on the number of those projects, they're not even looking at bid letting until 2019 fall.
Like the trail, for example. So unfortunately, in hindsight, they shouldn't have probably been included at that time because it does make the numbers look heavier than they really are because they're essentially placeholders that it, more or less, because they show up as an expenditure, but there's no way we can do it this year. So it, we just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, so it makes sense. In the future, as we move forward, the intent is not to put those CIP projects in there until we're actually preparing to do those projects so we don't, so it doesn't look like there's a project happening and there's expense associated with that. It's just not going to happen for another year, two, or three. Well, it doesn't impact anything. It's just that on paper, it shows it happening this next year when the reality is those projects are probably one, two, or three years out.
I'd say bid letting most of those projects in 2019 fall for buildout in 2020.
But that's not our timeline.
That's state.
That's on the state. It's just, in an ideal world, we wouldn't have included that in there so that we wouldn't confuse anyone into thinking this is happening in the year that's in the budget, so.
And all three of those projects were included in your prior budget.
Yeah, so they've been sitting there every year, taking up space, I guess, if you will. But it doesn't hurt anything. It just gives a perception that we're going to be spending more money than we actually will.
Another thing that goes with that is if we were to remove them based on the budget formula that's involved that's submitted to the state auditor, that goes through the Department of Roads or Department of Transportation now, or whatever we're calling it again. And they look at that, and if those were to be removed based on the balance of it, it would jeopardize highway allocation funds for the city of Seward in the future until we reallocated ourselves and fixed what happened. And so by leaving them there, we're keeping ourselves on par, but we just have to carry them over year in, year out. Another item that's in there, just, it's because it's a large item. For instance, it's health insurance increases. We, because we rolled over on December 1 for our benefits renewal, we don't know at the time of budgeting what the estimated increase at this time is for our renewal of our health insurance for the next coming year. And so we've estimated, tried to be conservative with a 15% increase, but we've been warned that it could be higher, it could be lower. But we've seen it all across the board in regards to, our provider right now is Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we've seen it all across the board with them. And so that's another one that may come in. And we're, me and Bonnie have been investigating other options that might have significant savings. And so there's, there's a lot of areas for us to make up the ground on the $200,000. But unfortunately, due to some of the circumstances and the budget requirements and the way we reported to the state, this is how it was submitted. So technically, it is, on paper, it is a deficit. We will eat into cash reserves. I believe we have 1.7 million, and we'll spend down to about 1.5. If I can find the pertinent budget page for you.
And we were.
Page 40 of your packet, actually. I can demonstrate this to you.
And I don't, I don't know how often, but the chances of us spending everything in the budget is pretty low because we, our department heads are pretty frugal when it comes to those expenditures, and they're pretty careful about that.
That's what I was just going to add. We have to do an estimate for the end of the year. You know, we hope we don't spend all the money, but we put a number in there, try to get as close as we can. Department heads are really good about watching it, count them all the time. But it's unlikely that we'll spend everything, and so we'll carry over cash that more than, I hope. We don't have any more water issues.
Quickly, just for your reference, page 40 of your packet, if you have it available. It notes a projected cash at the beginning or at the end of this fiscal year of $2,475,000 approximately. And we'll be at $2,242,000 in cash reserves, cash on hand at the end of the fiscal year next year. And so we're expending about $232,000 as a deficit on paper in the budget. Again, if we don't do a lot of projects, we find savings in health insurance and other things. We can close that gap.
Do you have any questions?
I do.
Yes, John.
East Seward Street at $60,000. Is that, is that going to get pushed off, you think, or you think that's going to happen?
I don't know. You know, Greg.
East Seward Street, I believe, is listed, is that, was that a sub project?
I assume we're doing that ourselves.
If we're doing it ourselves, we can complete it as it needs to be. We have no assistance from the state, even those other large projects are. NDR controls those. They handle all of the environmental assessment and everything else that goes with it. They let the bid, they do all the stuff with that. If East Seward Street is an in-house project, we can complete it.
It's more than likely to be done then.
It's in the project list to be done over a three-year period.
Other than phases to it, isn't there?
It's in the budget list for $60,000. I didn't know if we were going to just do the overlay again or if we're going to.
And again, as we noted with the city engineer coming on, that that might be a project that they can help assist us with and get laid out and we can maybe complete it here.
Yes.
And I know we're covering the water break later on, but just for the sake of the budget, so we can make sure everybody knows. Is there any money added to or in the budget anywhere for the water break?
No. What we're doing now, unfortunately, we don't know when it will hit because we want that project done. I know Tim is here, so he could probably speak to that more directly in regards to this budget. If at all possible, if we can start expending funds for engineering and everything else, we're going to expend them this fiscal year because that project needs to be completed as soon as possible so that we can continue our loop system to protect the south side of Seward. And so Tim's been working with Olson on that one, and they've gotten started. And I think we've already green-lighted the engineering portion of it.
Yeah, the engineering.
Because it came in under our, under our general engineering contract with them. The engineering estimation is below the threshold for that, so we said just get started. We don't know for sure how much that project will be. I know we've thrown some numbers around, but we'll just never know until they get done with the engineering portion of it. And as Terry said, on the water wastewater side, we do have a bit of cash reserves. And so if we have to go substantially over into next year's capital budget, we would look to, as some of us discussed in the last few weeks, we would look to amend the budget at the end of next year with your approval if we had to add an extra capital item to compensate for that large project.
Any other questions or comments?
Greg, you and I were chatting as far as taxing authority and where things are at. I mean, what, where are we sitting from? If we had to increase taxes, what's the max that we can add?
The max, I think, is up to like 49 cents is the limit. I don't know what the jumps are in regards to.
I thought it was based off of.
There's a formula for how.
Yeah, there's a formula. I mean, we, you may, the max may be 49 cents, but where we're sitting today and based off of our prior budget, there's a formula. We may only be able to add 3 cents and not the full.
And we, I never got that question answered for you. In regards to closing the deficit though, I think we're looking at 6 cents was my estimation to secure, based on our property valuations, the $232,000. And so that's where we are. We never got a definitive answer for you from the budget session. I apologize for that.
That's right. I just wanted to be on the front level, folks, because, you know, there is a $400,000 transfer that we did from electric. So we're robbing from something that should be its own business and putting it into the general fund.
And that was in the prior fiscal year, just for people paying attention and watching at home. This year, we do not have any recommendation at this time to transfer any of those funds. And so we're not.
Just so people are aware, big expenditures pop up. At some point, we're going to have to add some knowledge on it.
Any other questions or comments? We do have a number of items here, A through E. But before we do that, it is a public hearing. So I do want to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on any of these items listed under eight? Seeing no one rushing to the podium, then I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any other questions or comments? Or do you want me to start going down the list if you're prepared?
Well, I want to.
Yeah, John.
Because I didn't make it because I was out of town, but. E-911, that's been a discussion. Are we figuring on any extras in there for that? Because there's a potential of there as well.
At this time, the only thing we have budgeted just to, as a placeholder, obviously, we need to go back to the county and discuss it with them, is we have budgeted what we felt comfortable with, which was half of the telecom additional costs that we're going to have outside of our normal E-911 obligations. We didn't believe we could eat the whole $100,000 this coming year. And so there is approximately $50,000 in the coming budget. But we don't know if that will be the city's ask or not. That will be up to the determination of the administration in this body to kind of come together and figure out what we need to go speak with them about.
It's something to also keep in mind. I'm also hearing chatter at the legislature that they're looking at super regional E-911 centers that would be for maybe only having six across the state that would have like a territory. Don't know how that would work. Details aren't there yet, but just keep in mind the concept that this could very well, we could be forced into something much different. And if that's the case, I would imagine the board would go away because there would be no need for the board of that magnitude. So that's just something to keep in mind that there is discussion about creating super regions for that purpose. Is there any other questions or comments? Oh, I would start. So A was just the summary, the 2017-2018 budget hearing and budget summary on support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, or observations regarding the proposed city budgets and setting the funnel tax request A different amounts than the prior year tax request, which includes an additional 1% increase in restricted funds and authorization to file documents. I don't believe any actions required for A. So then going on to B, consideration of approval of an additional 1% increase in restricted funds.
Move for approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign none to register your votes. Please display the votes. Item C, consideration of approval of 2017-2018 budgets and authorize the filing of budget forms.
Move your proof.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign none to register your votes. Please display the votes. Item D is consideration of a resolution for 2017-2018 property tax request, different from property tax request for prior year. Would someone like to introduce this resolution? The resolution has been introduced and is designated as Resolution Number 2017-12. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item E, consideration of an ordinance for adoption of the city's budgets to appropriate sums of necessary expenses and liabilities to provide for an effective date and include an additional 1% in restricted funds. Would someone like to introduce this ordinance?
Introduce it.
An ordinance to adopt the budget statements to be termed the Budget Annual Appropriation Bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, which includes an additional 1% increase in restricted funds to provide for an effective date, to provide for publication of this in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is hereby designated as Ordinance Number 2017-17. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
So move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Sign none to register your votes. Please display the votes. Again, this is ordinance number 2017-17. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, the question is, ordinance number 2017-17, be finally passed and adopted. Please register your votes. Please display your votes. This is the last, or the only ordinance this evening. So only one final motion to make the ordinance a part of the permanent record. So we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. All right, thank you. Item number nine, council to confirm Mayor Ickmeyer's reappointments to the listed boards and commissions. A is the reappointment of Boyd Gable to the Housing Appeals Board for a three-year term.
Move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. Uh, the reappointment of Gary Palmeranke to the Civic Center Commission for a three-year term.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. The reappointments of Pat Colehiron and John Owen to the LVA forty sales tax application review board for economic development for a three-year term.
Would you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. And a reappointment of Ed Gonzales to the electrician's board for a two-year term.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. My next item number ten, this is consideration of special designated liquor license for Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership to serve alcohol for a night-to-flight event at the Nebraska National Guard Museum on October twentieth, twenty seventeen.
This is the first SDO requested by the SECDP, and that's why it's coming to you. We don't have any concerns with it.
Any questions or comments?
That's true.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Is there any further discussion? Say no, please register your votes. Please play the votes. All right. Item number eleven, discussion out and follow-up to August twenty, twenty seventeen water main break emergency. Greg, did you wanna take this?
Yeah, I'll just kinda let you know, there is kind of an executive summary timeline that I distributed on the tables to you guys prior to the meeting here that you can look over. It gives kind of the highlights of the important moments and times as things took place over August twentieth. We denote the entire emergency extending all the way until August twenty-fifth, even though the water became consumable on the twenty-third. Along this line, not the actual main that broke, but north of it, along the same corridor which we had to shut off for an extensive period of time on Monday and Tuesday, we had another break right in front of the car wash that we were out there digging for on Friday morning, and shutting all those same people off for quite a few hours on Friday. And so we included that in there because it involved the same amount of communication, that we had to do distribution of water by the volunteer fire department that day. And so that's kind of our time period is from Sunday through Friday, gets us through the entire event. And so it's all laid out there for you. I know that we distributed via email today some answers to one of the council members' questions that came to us shortly after the event started. And I thought that information was so pertinent to our discussions and things you guys may be concerned about, I sent it to everybody today. And that is more technical information in regards to the break.
And there'll be a follow-up as well, right?
Yeah, there'll be a full, full end report. What happened, after the incident was done, the following week, I believe on Tuesday after that Friday, myself and the water department sat down and we went through a debriefing of the whole process, just in relation to the water department. What things went well, what things didn't go well, what can we do different in the future? What sort of equipment needs did they have? What sort of personnel needs did they have? And so we followed up and did that the afternoon on Tuesday, and our next meeting that we'll have will be involving everybody that was on the emergency, basically the command team. These are the people that showed up to City Hall when, once we declared the emergency, or we noted it to the department heads. This will include emergency management, health department, a number of people that were there on Sunday afternoon, helping coordinate our efforts, and then working with us throughout the week until we got it resolved. And so we'll do another meeting with all of them to do basically the same debriefing process. We'll talk about what went well, what didn't, timelines, what we can change in the future. Was there any needs that we had that we weren't able to fulfill, and, and equipment that we might, might have needed, or communications and things like that? So that's kind of the process. I don't know what additional questions you guys may have about the incident, but I know that we have Tim here tonight, so we can answer any of your technical questions or specific questions about the emergency as it took place.
John?
Yeah, so this is gonna bring up a discussion, because we do have some newer council members here, including yourself.
I'm not councilman.
Well, but you're new.
Yes.
One of the things that we were required when we went through some of these emergency management meetings is, everybody here has to be current on NIMS to be able to qualify for federal monies. Is everybody up to date?
I have a listing of everyone who has their NIM certification.
Okay. Mr. Larry, council number one is here, is up to date, and including Greg.
I don't know what Greg has as far as NIM certification.
Because that'd be something that I would take, you know, since we're talking about this, this was kind of a catastrophic event. And if we had to apply for FEMA money, we wouldn't want some to have a shortfall there.
I'll let you know from previous experience, because I handled and coordinated with FEMA two flood events in two thousand and fifteen in Beatrice that I had no NIM certification or anything else. And I was the first city done in the whole state for that event that took place, I believe it was Mother's Day, those flooding events.
And a big part of that is following the emergency management procedures and having sure, making sure that the county is making a request for various things, and that we're not going around the county and asking. That's why we, I declared emergency, the county had to declare the emergency, so it goes to the governor, then you can mobilize the National Guard. I can't just call up the National Guard or the governor without going through the process. Otherwise, you do run into some of the reimbursement issues you mentioned. So we were very careful about, about that as we went forward, but.
We were, during the event that night, we were on the phone throughout the evening with NIMA, Nebraska Emergency Management Agency. And then we did have a visit that me and Tim went under with emergency staff from NIMA after the emergency was over that week, and they came down and visited and looked through all our costs and our estimated cost and what we would have in the future to help prepare us if they believed that we would have federally qualified. Because what they were doing is looking at the whole region for that flood event and trying to determine if there was enough damage and costs involved in it to declare a federal disaster, thus working in the ability to get ourselves recompensated on the federal level. Based on the conversations me and Tim have had with NIMA, they didn't believe we would hit that threshold for this water event, so.
I'm just saying, and I think, because we all had to go through that, and, you know, we've, we've got different department heads too, and I, I think if I remember right, all the department heads had to be as well, to that level, I think it's eight, NIM's eight now, I think, all that's in NIM's eight. I'm just saying, we don't wanna have a shortfall that you might wanna.
Well, in these situations, there's always a good opportunity to review everything and just make sure that everything is not only done right, but make sure that we're prepared for if there is a next issue or emergency that comes up. So that's, that's a good point, and that's part of, I think, the debriefing process that Greg was talking about. It's just to make sure we have all those things lined up.
Just to flag the, the backup?
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Any other questions or comments from the council on this item, under eleven? Yeah, Sid?
Probably the most pre-question I got from people I talked to was, what, what would the city have to do different in the future to prevent something like this from happening again? In other words, I'm assuming that fourteen-inch main isn't unique as far as its age. It's probably unique in its location, you know, going under the river and then being in a flood plain. But with the, you know, the SCADA system shutting the pumps off and, and the crews not being able to quickly identify exactly where the leak was, and I realize the flood complicated that. That's the biggest question I would get from people is, okay, well, you know, we made it through this one, but what's to prevent it from happening, a catastrophic event like this again?
I think the first one, I'll let Tim answer if, if I'm mistaken in my analysis of this, but I think the first one would be is we need to have, and we need to work in the future, and I've spoken to the mayor about this, with our city engineer coming online, we need to have a maintenance plan, a definitive maintenance plan defined for our water wastewater system. Because without having all of those identified in our GIS with size, age, the, you know, type of material that those are made of, and then also identifying breaks that we've had, because this is the same line that we had a break out at Tenneco just a year before. It's the same line, correct him? And so we've had a break on this one for, now, I can't tell you, and I don't know that we, Tim could either tell you that they're interrelated. I mean, they're not even close to each other. But we've had two significant breaks in two years on that line. And so what we need to do is start identifying our old infrastructure and start putting together a plan based on that information, barring emergencies, you know, that something else blows out and we have to take care of something else. And put together a maintenance plan where we go through and say, all right, we have this hundred-year-old main, we've had this many small breaks on it. It's probably due to be replaced next year. We put it in CIP, and we continue to do our minimum maintenance to keep our system up. Me and the mayor have discussed that, and then that's what we hope to really get something like the city engineer started on immediately, to start identifying that, working with our camera system that they have now on the wastewater side to, to go look through those and start assessing the quality of our wastewater system as well. And so that would be the first step. The second one is we, I think on regards to the flood one, if we wouldn't have the flood, we would've found this immediately. I mean, it would've only been minutes.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, someone's gonna call City Hall and say, there's a geyser in their front yard. At that point, and if it's in town, typically, the valves are gonna be easily accessible, and you just go to one side, right to end, go to one side, and you close the valve, go the other side, probably enclose the valve, more or less. I mean, we're simplifying it, but you, you can easily find the leak, you can easily access the leak and access the valves. And, and if it's not a real big leak, the system will keep up with, with the leak. It's just when it's a leak of this magnitude in a place where you can't see it, it makes it very difficult. And, you know, it's, it is more or less a perfect storm in the sense of all these other factors going on, and an eclipse the next day. You know, all these things sort of, I mean, that's like most of revelations, I think, is, was pretty much covered, except for locusts, right? And having mosquitoes, so, yeah, so.
The, the last one being, councilman, would probably be also within the SCADA system itself, which is designed and engineered by Olson Associates, and they oversee it. We can monitor it, we can do some of the things in there, but some of the protocols that are built into it, like when it shut down the pumps, when it recognized that there was a catastrophic loss of water, it shut us out and it shut themselves down. They've removed that from the engineering portion of it now, and they, they were trying to anticipate why it was there in the first place. And you can only speculate at this point why it was even designed into it in the first place. But now that it's gone, and what it will allow us, we can't keep up with this break, as you can tell by the data I provided. When you're maxing out at forty-five hundred gallons per minute, and we're losing anywhere from fifteen to twenty, who knows? In regards to the break itself, fifteen to twenty thousand gallons per minute, we can't keep up. But as I've learned from Tim, what it would allow us to do is to at least keep positive flow going through the system. So one thing that we were worried about is that we're not getting reverse flow of pulling in floodwater, sucking that into the system, and then we would've had a bigger problem. And so that would've gave us a guaranteed positive flow through the system until they found it.
Otherwise, I mean, you, you have the potential where you just keep pumping water, and it just keeps going right through the system to the point where now you start jeopardizing, you know, your water supply. And I, I wouldn't be surprised if that was part of the reason for a safety mechanism, and so you don't, I mean, I had a problem in my basement with, with my toilet cracked, and so water floods my basement from the toilet, right? Well, then what happens when the toilet level gets low enough, fills itself back up? So I had essentially a perpetual flood on a much smaller scale, obviously, but it's the same principles involved, where it just keeps filling up the tank. It leaks out, you fill it up, it leaks out, until you can, can isolate that, turn it off. You just have a perpetual flood, which is what I think the system was trying to avoid. Tim, did you wanna add some? It could be still up to the podium. I know you're comfortable and with really soft chairs, but it might come up to forty-three's space.
You know, one thing made it really difficult in this section is, there is no valve to isolate that section for a long ways. And that made it really difficult, because in most areas in the city, you can isolate a section within a block. This is almost a mile. And the only valve available, according to the French, is the one that was under the river, from twenty-five feet to the north side of the river, which was underwater about nine feet that we couldn't get to. So to correct that problem, that's why we put in the two main valves to isolate the system. But like, you know, like we were saying, I mean, the timetable even shocked me how fast it took to drain those. But that's the lowest elevation in the system. And when you, you gotta train rolling at that speed, it didn't, it didn't take long.
Like the bathtub drain.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Thanks, Tim. Any other questions or comments from the council?
The one I'll bring up is, John? Are we, are you looking at, you know, because this is one thing we've talked about years and years ago, and we haven't went any further, but with the engineer coming on board, we have those two dead stops on the south side of waters, you know, that we have to dismantle or condemn because of the railroad track. So you got a dead stop on the west side, you got a dead stop on the east side, and we were gonna loop around that building to get those two big mains together again. Are, are we considering that again? Because that's a high flow.
There is a loop. I don't care where, the one that follows the railroad track, from west to the west, all the way to the east, Highway fifteen. That one, you know, it ties into where that break was.
Right.
Yeah, there is a loop there that goes all the way from two ninety-four to Highway fifteen.
I, I remember that, but we lost that one line when we, when they put that other track in.
Yeah.
And that was, I think it's a sixteen-inch main that goes from.
I'd have to look that one up, see if that was still there, and I think I heard you talking about that.
Yeah, that's it, because we had to put a dead stop on the east side, and then there's one on the west side, and that's a sixteen. And we were gonna loop that around, but it was a cost factor.
Yeah. Uh, one thing I could say, we did expose the break on that line, and it's in about a ten-foot hole on the north side. And when we did, it split all the way down the pole bottom with the knife, with the length. We're not sure how far it goes, but we know it's five to six feet long. So something shifted, put a lot of pressure. And like you said, we've had two breaks in that same line, in that area, and both of them are perfectly good-conditioned pipes, and they split right down the middle. So there's no way you can predict if there's a bad piece of pipe, you know, that has pressure on that, it can split, and that's probably.
Did it split along the weld? Is it welded or is it cast?
It's cast.
It's cast?
Yeah.
Thanks, Tim. Do we have any other questions or comments? Good work, thank you. If, uh, we don't have any action on this, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity. If you have any other questions, we move on.
But I still think that, John, the water department should be commended, because they did do a very good job. I, I, I think for the conditions they were in, they should be commended.
No, absolutely, and I, I did have an open letter in the paper on Wednesday, just thanking them as well as everyone else who played a role in, in making sure that, you know, that everything went as smoothly as, as possible. Fortunately, you know, we were able to resolve it relatively quickly, relatively speaking, but yeah. I was very proud of the department, as well as the longer fire department, and everyone else who stepped in and, and was ready to take action if needed and called upon, so with that, I'll move on.
Okay. Move on then to item number twelve. This is discussion of downtown revitalization phase two application and review of downtown survey. Greg?
Yep, this is just a follow-up before we have our public hearing next meeting in regards to our actual phase two application. As we had the presentation done last time, we just need to get final kind of approval that we wanna move forward with the facade improvement and a capital or a commercial rehabilitation program. I was given information by SECDP. They did conduct an online survey that was set to specifically downtown property owners and business owners, and they received positive feedback across the board. A mass majority of the people that responded wanted to see a facade improvement program, a commercial rehabilitation. And so I just wanna get a reconfirmation from this body that that's what we're gonna bring forward to you in two weeks for our actual application, which is due by the end of the month. And so I didn't know if you had any further questions before we have send, draft that, final application up and bring it forward for a public hearing, and then approval for submittal in two weeks.
Any questions or comments or concerns about where we're at with this project? No?
Okay.
Do you need any action on this?
Uh, I would say if we could get a motion to recommend.
This has a discussion.
Oh.
We can take action on any of the items, but.
Greg, will you share that whatever they share with you at the council?
Yes, um, they sent out a five-question questionnaire. The first question being, what is your opinion of the proposed Seward downtown revitalization plan priorities and projects? Which they include a link that you can go read those priorities and projects. They said overall, they got lots of support with eighteen positive comments about the proposed plan, five neutral comments and two not respondents. In regards to question two, of any of the proposed project, priorities and projects, which one do you think should be implemented in the near future? A majority of respondents, ten of the eighteen, recommended facade improvement, commercial rehabilitation. Question three, of any of the proposed priorities and projects, which one do you think should be implemented in the long term? Number of mixed responses, with the majority discussing gathering spaces, parking, lane diet, and the consideration of re-sizing highways fifteen and thirty-four, expanding fifteen and shrinking thirty-four. Was what we just talked about at the presentation a few weeks ago. Question four is if a commercial rehabilitation grant program is implemented in the next six months to support Seward downtown building and businesses owners to rehabilitate their buildings, both inside and out, do you plan to participate in it within the next two years? Because we would have a two-year window on the phase two project, once we open up and make funds available. A responded yes, A responded no, and A responded maybe, depending on the size of the grant. One didn't respond to the question. And the comments that were allowed to be left, if you do plan to rehabilitate your building, how much do you estimate investing in within the next two years? When you add it up, the respondents that filled that in add up to a total of one million seventy-two thousand and eight dollars. With others responding that they plan to invest but don't have quotes yet for their facility updates. If you would like to, the last question, if you'd like to stay engaged in the process for downtown revitalization, list your name, and then for property owners, list their name and contact information.
And I do want to add that the overall feeling from this process was that any building owners and business owners want.
And I do want to add that the overall feeling from this process was that, I think, building owners and business owners wanted a, a, an opportunity, they wanted a program, but ultimately, they wanted to make a decision of whether they wanna participate. In the past, some of the sentiment has been that the city decides to do something and they basically send them a bill. And then that's really the, the, what they did not wanna see happen again. And so what we're just looking at is saying, hey, if you wanna participate in this, that's great, you know, we might seek out certain buildings owners and say, you know, we noticed this, if you really use an improvement, would you be willing to participate in this program? But ultimately, it's gonna be their decision on, on whether they wanna to, and be involved with this and participate in this. And if they don't, that's fine, um, I think there'll be plenty of businesses and owners and pro- property owners who are going to want to, that I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I don't even have to twist too many arms, and my guess is once you start seeing things happen, usually that entices other people who may not have been really reluctant to, to wanna get involved as well. Uh, no one wants to be first, but no one wants to be left out, so, so that's where we're at with that, um, item twelve. Are there any other?
I would just note one other thing in regards to that. Uh, our match in that program is approximately twenty-five percent match for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. I think if the numbers in, in the survey are true, and they're gonna put a million dollars in investment, we easily have the, the match for that, and so as you guys design your program, keep that number in mind, if that truly is the investment amount that's out there and how you spread out the money, but we do have the match coming from private business owners, and we won't have to expend any public funds in regards to facilitating that match for the grant then, which is good for us, I believe.
Those are the other questions or comments or concerns, twelve, we'll move on. Item number thirteen, the city administrators' report.
Uh, well, the last two weeks since I saw you last, I think you know mostly what I was doing first one of the weeks. Um, but handling the water event, um, working on a number of items, we, we handled solar clips, and for being right in the middle of a water emergency, I believe it went really well. I know we walked and stopped by the library, and they had a number of people out there, and then we checked in with Concordia, uh, and a number of businesses, the National Guard Museum, and, and all looked like they were having a pretty good time and, and had a good turnout, and so uh, we kinda lucked out on that one. Looking at everything else, uh, we just have coming up, uh, probably the downtown revitalization is gonna take up a majority of what you'll look at, cause you'll approve the final plan at the next meeting, and then you also approve the application for phase two. Do you have any questions about that report?
Would you like to make a motion to accept the city administrator's report?
So move.
Motion in a second, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Are there any future requests for council unit items or administrative action?
Uh, we were gonna put on the, um, S E C D P, um, approval for a term.
The appointment?
I don't know if you're ready to do that, or when you would have that on there, but we can...
Off for the next meeting?
That'd be, that'd be great, cause S E C D P wants to do its succession planning.
Yeah, that you can share it on the next agenda. Any other requests?
Did we ever get a bill on those tables, the re- extra?
I don't know that ones come in. We probably need a court, is your meeting in September?
They were gonna skip a month, so I think it's next month.
Okay.
Unless there's any other requests, then we'll add anything in motion to adjourn.
Move.
Thank you, motion in a second, please register your votes. Please play the votes.